Order at seven thirty-one, just missed the top of the minute. And start off with a roll call.
Katie Petrowski.
Here.
Tim Merlow.
Here.
T.J. McLaughlin.
Here.
Darryl Lewandowski.
Here.
Casey Kelly.
Here.
Bart Cahn. Doug Shepherd.
Here. Okay. We have, we should all have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Um, do you want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Make the motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
No, we don't need to do that.
Just a second.
Second.
All those in favor say yes. Yes. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next item of business is public comment. And the floor is open for a brief public comment if someone would like to be recognized. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Brent Hensley. I'm from All-American Storage for, for those of you who don't know me. I guess, um, I think we're probably going to get where we want to go with this ordinance eventually. So I think we'll probably end up getting where we want to go with this ordinance and everybody's going to be happy and I certainly appreciate the time that you people are putting in. But as far as we've had a couple of meetings kind of already, but what I was wondering tonight was how we ended up at this point. I don't think any of you really would like to be here tonight. You've probably got our thing to do and you're not in it for the money and I certainly wouldn't want to be here. What makes me wonder is how did we end up with an ordinance that irritated, or being proposed that irritates the Industrial Association so much? What I'm wondering is who crafted the language in the new proposed ordinance? Was the members of the planning commission, were they involved with that? Or who, who exactly crafted this that, that is, brings us all here? I think it's an important question on who is, who is bringing our evenings here and why? Because what we're, basically we're not here to fight for anything new, we're just trying to maintain the rights that we had beforehand. And why we're all wasting our time here, I don't understand.
Okay, maybe, maybe I can say something. But, um, the draft ordinance was created by the Salem Township Planning Commission over a ninety-month period when West Shusta was operating as its chairman. And he had, they had a number of working sessions with the entire planning commission going through, I mean, I sat in on a couple of them, this is why I know what the process was, even though it wasn't on the planning commission. But they went through detailed sections and the members of the planning commission were involved in the dialogue of picking apart and recommending the actual verbiage to go in the sections with the, um, let's call it the oversight and assistance of Mr. Pennington and the zoning administrator that the township had at the time, which was Mr. DeGru. So it was very much a collaborative work. I think the, um, the only point, you know, that I'll make of what I observed is, is the meetings were not well attended by people, members of the public. So it was very much the planning commission's work along with the experts rather than an opportunity for a lot of systems.
Okay, I understand that. I did make the point at a previous meeting that at no time did I see any notice of these meetings.
Yes, and I, I can assure you, all the meetings and their agendas were posted in accordance with the township practices. And so it's, it's better matter of.
Was it ever, was ever in the messenger at one time even? The newsletter that goes out to the entire community most?
So, that said.
No, it wasn't.
Well, no, but, but then I'll just say, that said, we got to the point, I mean, because I'm not going to debate you, I listen to what you say and such. We get to the point where we now have this draft ordinance and as I've said in previous meetings, right? In the interest of having the best possible process going forward, we chose not to have a very quick review of the ordinance by the planning commission and send it to the township board, which was, which is what we're entitled to do. Instead, we have scheduled the time and made the effort to engage the members of the community to allow you to understand the nuance that's in the ordinance, have a chance to ask the experts what's going on, um, and express your opinions and comments related to the ordinance. That will get us to a point where the ordinance will then become bundled up as a draft ordinance. Planning commission will review it and hopefully take action to send it to the township board for review and potential approval. And so I'll just tell you, we're doing the best we can given the situation we've.
I, I understand that, Mr. Shepherd. I'm, I'm not trying to pick on anyone in particular or anything. It's just that the way this thing is drafted as far as the industrial is, it's, it's taken away our property, some of them. And, you know, the fact that, I, I would kind of, I kind of want to know who is wanting to impose a harsher restrictions on me. I, I want to know who, who is the one who's writing this verbiage? That's, that's what I want to know. I mean, who, who is the person, what is the agenda behind trying to move setbacks back, restrict the outdoor storage? Who is my enemy and who, who am I fighting? Thank you.
That's Mr. Horton.
Bob Horton, I own A-Interhold in San Antonio. When this first started, I, I came to Mr. DeGru and I told him that we went through a lot of problems in, in the other ordinance in nineteen eighty-one. And I asked him, I said, my wife has dementia. I says, I can't get away to come to these meetings, like I sure that I can't get babysitter. And are we going to have to go through the same thing in this new ordinance that we did in the old one to fight for our rights about that? We actually, when we walked out of the meeting in nineteen eighty-one, we, we had an agreement with the, the, the planning commission that was there and it was settled, everything was happy, but when it came out in print, it wasn't what we actually negotiated. And there was a lot of, it's here. Mr. Sack was here, most of the people came up to these meetings. There's only seventeen or eighteen people that have buildings or businesses on, well, you got three on Six Mile, you got two on Five, you got, I'm on, on Salem Road and Stanty. If you have outside storage, it doesn't make any difference what you store. I mean, I've got a steel fabricating shop, Stanty's got a, a construction company that does sewers. Anywhere you go in the state, you're going to see in heavy industrial outside storage that you have a sewer company the same as the one down there, or a trucking company, or somebody that grind stone or something like that. We're not asking for anything that we didn't have in nineteen eighty-one. We walked away happy and now it comes up again where you want green belts between us and fences and I don't understand. We, we're the only zoned area in this township that is allowed to have something sitting outside, a piece of equipment, a truck, a pile of stone, pile of wood. And you'll notice there's a lot of wood for Salem, Salem, and a lot of machines sitting on the side of the road that aren't in our, our zoning. Our zoning is the only one allowed outside storage. And like I said, we don't understand, we don't understand why we have to hide it. That's it. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, in the back.
A little bit of your comment that you've given to the general industrial. Some of us have been here since the start of this revision. It has been extremely frustrating to know what the agenda is, to know whether our comments are being addressed. You've been very gracious about listening to them. It's been much better since you put the draft ordinance online, but tonight we did not know what was on this agenda until four, three or four this afternoon when somebody finally got an agenda up. So it hasn't been real user-friendly, this entire process. And again, it's very frustrating to come meeting after meeting to tell you our concerns and not know whether changes are being made or not. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Roy Hacker, White Trucking. I want to know what gives everybody the right to take our rights away. We bought into general industrial, unlimited outdoor storage, twenty-four, seven, anything goes except for hazmat. Anything goes, anything we want to do. That's what we bought into. We turn our backs, we go do our business, we try and survive and all of a sudden I've got a panel of seven, eight people that are trying to take all my property values away from me. I don't understand why. I don't understand what the reasoning is. The last time I posed this question, y'all said, well, it's general practice, about every ten, twelve years you go through the ordinances. Well, that's fine if you want to go through the ordinances and make sure that things are up to par, but it doesn't make sense that you take away outdoor storage, you got to have fences, you can't have your piles higher than your fences, you can only have six-foot fences. That is not general industrial. That's not, that's not what it is. And if you're going to take our property values away from us, then somebody needs to figure out a way to buy us out in places somewhere where you want us. Because if y'all don't want general industrial property on this, in this township, then just buy us out, move us to someplace that will accept us, or leave it the way it was. There was nothing wrong with it the way it was. He's talking, Mr. Horton's talking about back in the eighties when you guys went through or the previous board members went through and changed everything. He also did it in, what, ninety-nine or two thousand? I was at every single one of those meetings and none of us really knew any of this was going on. We just found out about it when you were just about this close to pass it, where you got to have all these green belts and fences and nothing within so many thousand feet of a residential property? It's aggravating and y'all just need to leave it the way it was and leave us alone. Or buy us out, give us fair market value before you start messing with it and move us. Rick Sack.
Yes, sir. Down in the corner. I'd like to bring your attention that when I moved out here from Plumm, moved around up Hurdis Road. I was in the paving business. I had three trucks parked way around in the back by a metal building back there. I had a low boy back there, had a small crawler back there and some other miscellaneous stuff in the asphalt business. My visitor was the supervisor himself, Floyd Taylor, hell of a nice man. He reckons you can't do this. Can you do what? You can't have trucks and stuff on your residential property. And at that time it was gravel roads and nobody was in sight. There was no houses across the street, there was nothing, just me, help on the hill. I said, Floyd, what's this all about? He says, we have zoning for this. You got to be in the zoning. I said, what is that? He says, Chubb Road, go down there, Chubb Road, buy yourself a piece of property and nobody's going to bother you. You can have anything out there, you can't tan eyes and have junkyards and things like that at that particular time. But he said, um, that's where you belong. I went down there and I paid a doggone good price for the piece of property that I purchased to do just that. I'm now seventy-nine years old, first of all, I'll be eighty. I planned at that time to at least have the equity in the property to sell it, to go do my thing for the rest of my life. Now, I ask each and every one of you, I don't know what you're doing for the rest of your life, but put it on the line just like you've got us on the line. And then have a bunch of people, led by a bunch of other people, to say, hey, you can't do this, you can't do this. Who the hell are you to take away from us? Thank you.
All right. We're done with public comment. For correspondence, I'll just make note of the January, February edition of Michigan Planner that came in. And that finishes item five. Item six, public hearings, there are none tonight. New business items, none, and now we get to the old business items that were the main point of the meeting scheduled here, which is to review several sections of the draft zoning ordinance. And what I, what I'd like to do is establish, let's say, the protocol for going through this because I don't want us to get into a debate, but I do want us to allow people to ask legitimate questions and make comments that will help, um, the experts and planning commission members understand points of view. So what we'll do is as we go into the, we have two sections, section forty, which is U standards and section thirty, which is dimensional standards, and I expect we'll take a bit of time to get through them. We'll, we'll let the experts walk us through the sections in Article forty and Article thirty. And when we get through a good chunk with a summary of what the content is and what we're trying to achieve there, then we'll pause for understanding and allow the commissioners to ask some questions and such. And then we'll also, at that point, once the commissioners have, um, worked their way through the, the presentation like that, then we'll let the public have an opportunity to ask questions for clarification and such. And again, I just ask everybody, um, be brief and to the point and please don't turn this into a debate. And so we'll do that and we'll work our way through Article forty and Article thirty and then I think we'll have had a full night. So at that point, unless there's any other questions, I'd like to get going.
I was going to make a comment. When's the appropriate time when you finish?
Yes.
Okay. What I would suggest with the commission is based on the review of Article forty, that we start on page forty dash thirty-eight. A lot of concern has been expressed about the industrial area, the uses, with your permission. I think the people here have read and become familiar with that section. We know what some of the concerns are and I would like to suggest with the commission, not only do we start there, but whatever comments are made, whatever revisions are suggested, that we will have those revisions or your review back at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission, which is the twenty-fifth of this month.
Okay.
I think that's, will address your issues. You'll see them in black and white. Who won't address your issues?
It's the green belts.
I said, we're going to address all of your issues and revise draft with the planning commission's permission to be distributed by the next meeting of the planning commission. Did that be satisfactory with the commission? Because I know, we know the history and as I've mentioned, Mr. Horton, and I know Brent, I talked to him earlier, I know some of these issues. And it's my opinion that after we go through some of these additions, as you said, Mr. Chair, that there's really no need to debate. I think we can take it upon ourselves to present appropriate language that's going to address the issues that these gentlemen have brought forward. And the proof of that will be at the next planning commission meeting, which will be the twenty-fifth, when you will have a revised draft of what you discussed tonight regarding the industrial concerns.
Okay.
If that's in your agreement, we will do that with you gentlemen.
That's fine. What page did you say we should?
Uh, we start on page thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
I would like to mention one other thing if I could while you're going to that page. I think some of the concerns of the past meeting when the planning commission did review portions of the zoning ordinance, that these gentlemen had an opportunity to bring some of the issues for review, such as how the land in the industrial district is going to be viewed when parcels are adjacent to each other. We're aware of that. We're aware, we're aware of utilization of the entire parcel. We're aware of the possibility of, of, with the green belt that we talk about, altering some of the standards that would allow some industrial use going up to that green belt. We're going to be checking on right of ways, that's been brought to our attention, on the roads that are in that area of the township, Chubb Road mainly. And we're going to be looking at lot size, we see no problem with what has been suggested by some of these gentlemen regarding the dimensional standards. So all of that, I think we are aware and that's part of what I'm presenting to you, that those issues will be revised as far as draft, as far as wording that you may see. So I'm not suggesting we don't talk about it, but I am suggesting, I think we know a lot of those issues and as long as you can just itemize them, let us know what they are, we will revise based upon planning commission consideration with the draft that we can all see to, to, to share the comments. So I mentioned that, meaning in the beginning, so that we don't have to, as you were, we don't need to debate, I think we're aware of some of the issues and I'm of the opinion that we can rectify some of the issues that we proved from these, from these gentlemen.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanted to say that in broken.
Oh, no, I'm fine, I'm fine. So I think we're ready to get going. I hope everybody has their draft ordinance and they have section forty point five oh one out, right?
Five oh one.
That's right.
This says five hundred, oh, this five oh one.
Which says intensive industrial operations, pardon.
It's on pitch thirty-nine.
Yep.
Let's, uh, just kind of give a quick summary of, of each of the sections as we go along. Uh, section forty point five oh one, intensive industrial operations. These are actually, one of the big ones was mentioned, hazardous waste storage, anything that involves potential pollutants, uh, or large amounts of noise or light or other, other activities might fall under this intensive industrial operations. I, I'm not aware of anything in the township currently that actually would meet the standard for this, but this, this is in here for the future because we do have general industrial land. And the, the essence of this section is basically the impact assessment, which is ABB, requiring that they, that any applicant for that kind of activity, I present to you a detailed report as to what their potential impacts are going to be, and we have the information you need to make, make a fully informed decision. And so should something come up in the future that's subject to the section, you would have that, those details you need. I think probably just for the purposes of going through this, we just go section by section, if there are any questions of the planning commission or any comments.
I, I have one, right, when I'm, I've skipped down to C, which talks about the development standards. And it says that intensive industrial should not be located within five hundred feet of any residential district. Is, is that consistent with the current ordinance that Salem Township has in place?
This is, this is a, a U standards, not in the current ordinance. This is covering some, some ground that, because we have in a general industrial district where there is potential for some pretty substantial industrial activity or, you know, getting into areas where it might be involving hazardous materials and such, this, this section is a new one to deal with that potential in the future.
So there, there's currently no restriction?
Right, not, not for this kind of activity.
Other than what happens in the, in the standards, let's call it site plan and and the review process, but there's, there's not, let's call it a specific guideline such as has been offered here where it sets a standard of five hundred feet.
Right. Okay.
Don?
Yes, sir.
Um, I understand the, what you're trying to do here with the intensive, you're not talking about upper. My concern with this section is who's going to interpret it? Say, five years from now. Now, I understand Donna, she explained to me what her interpretation is and she has no problem with it. Five years from now, different planning commission, different supervisor, different zoning administrator. My neighbor Roy has a tub grinder that he uses to make bark. Makes a decent amount of noise. I hear it, I don't care. He's talking about noise, Bobby.
Well, I'm talking about specifically, I'd like to ask the question, actually. The, the land use table, when we go back to Article twenty, we had the big table that had all the land uses in it. In that table, in the right-hand column, it referenced the sections in Article forty here that apply. So that there's specific land uses in the land use table that this section will apply to and no others. And as I said, right now, there's, as far as I'm aware, there's not any land use that would fit with that. It's basically hazardous material storage and handling, it's, that kind of, that scale of activity, which is not here right now, but certainly could be here at some point in the future because of general industrial industry.
Is there a definition in yours as far as what intensive industrial operations?
Uh, as, basically, what's, what, what is noted in the land use table. And we can make sure that that's, that's clear. I, I don't recall if there's a specific definition or not, but we can make sure there is one.
Just saying, you know, my name's Donald Sam, I represent Salem Industrial Association, which is the majority of the industrial businesses along Chubb Road. As you know, I was here before, some members are new, so we've gone over a lot of the things already, so I just wanted to address that one. Because the concern that you hit on ahead is that under the ordinance, it would really be a seventy-five foot buffer, which is fifty-foot side yard, a twenty-five foot transition buffer for general industrial next to rural or industrial under this, a five-hundred-foot buffer, which is obviously significant, um, so therefore it becomes very critical as far as what is defined to be intensive industrial operations. And, and obviously there are a number of businesses going on right now along Chubb Road that are trucking businesses, uh, different types of, uh, actual outdoor operations involving, I think, soil screening, things of that nature, that, that I don't know if we have a vague definition as far as noise. That would be my only concern is just getting a better definition as to what that is. I understand the goal, it's just a, as long as it doesn't impede the existing operation, which it seems like you're indicating it would not, we just need a little clarification.
Right, yeah, that's understandable. We can make that clarification.
Thank you. I don't mean to interrupt the conversation. Go ahead. What we're doing is writing that down and as I said, we're going to respond to that. Brent, through the chair, I'm, I'm asking these questions, I don't mean to go direct bottom line, but through the chair almost I do this. Do you have a problem with the interpretation as you read it?
I understand it. Now, whether somebody else will understand it is my concern.
Oh, yeah, all I'm asking is you guys, you're the ones that would be most appropriate in, in understanding the interpretation.
I'm, the way I'm reading it, I could see somebody using it against it.
Yep.
And saying that, that what I want to do qualifies, in their opinion, as an intensive industrial operator.
So you have concern on the interpretation? Okay, then we'll address that one. I can't tell you right now.
Because then, it, basically, it falls down to whoever wants to interpret it.
Okay, we'll look at that, make sure it's clear, sometimes even itemized, as you say, definitions might come into play here. Uh, going back to the use table, it shows a lot of these don't even concern most of the uses that we're talking about here. Okay, I just wanted to be sure that whatever we address, I want to be sure that we have clarity on this.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Following on Doug's question, the intense industrial operations and C, the development standards. It, it says five hundred feet of any residential. Is there residential on Chubb, that zone residential, or is it all industrial?
It's all industrial.
All industrial. Well, would that, you know, how is that going to affect, you know, being within five hundred feet? Then, then there's nobody that has to worry about that part of the, of it, do they?
That'd be, that'd be correct.
But isn't there some on Salem Road and then Five Mile, where are you about, and Six Mile?
On Salem, on Five Mile, there's, there's a four, five mile.
I was talking about Chubb, I, you know, the other ones.
On Salem Road, there's heavy industrial for five lots.
There's heavy industrial on Six Mile Road out front.
From, from the railroad tracks all the way to the RV plate to storage is all heavy industrial. And Shoobridge is the first one, through the chair. The first one is right across the track, Mr. Shoobridge. All those houses along there are heavy industrial, all the way up to, they're heavy. Across the street, though, from there is light industrial, except the corner house at Chubb and Six. That's light industrial, which shouldn't really affect.
But it's not residential.
It, there's residents there, but it's light industrial.
But it's not.
But it's not zone residential?
It is down on Five Mile.
The backs of some of the lots can't about residential property.
Lots in back?
Okay, so, I just wanna be clear, we're talking intensive industrial, and we're talking about, on the current zoning map, where the proximity of residential districts, and so what's come to our attention is the people that live south of Five Mile Road, between maybe Russian Lane and Salem Road, which it seems to be residential. And what I'm not clear on is, is there heavy industrial just directly across the street, don't?
Yes, yeah.
On the north side of Five Mile?
The road is the transition strip.
I'm sorry?
The road is actually the transition strip.
Yeah.
And also.
Because I, I'm not super clear on the distinction, I just don't know where the zoning districts are, so I don't know if it's, you know, light industrial or heavy industrial on the north side of Five Mile, heavy.
G one on the north side of Five Mile.
Okay, so that's an area where it seems as though it's in, it's not in compliance with this five-hundred-foot requirement that's listed here. And if that being the case, how would that be handled?
One of the reasons for that is not to put any kind of hardship on something that's already zoning industrial. This is meant to be an item that might come into play in other areas of the township, so that there would not be distinct conflicts between industrial and residential. That was part of the reasoning for that. If that's, if the interpretation here, that it's going to be some kind of a deterrent to the industrial, we'll definitely take a look at that. If it is a deterrent, then we'll address that issue as well.
Okay, well, I think we need to be very clear, so that people don't interpret it as something that restricts the existing uses.
Okay.
With the exception of a couple of farmhouses over there, all of them residential homes came after the general industrial. They've all been built within the last five, what, maybe ten years at the oldest? So it's a little bit unfair for someone to buy and build a house right across the street from industrial property, and then all of a sudden say, hey, you're not supposed to be doing this over here. Well, what came first, a chicken or the egg?
I appreciate that, because you could look at the restriction as going both ways, which would be something that could prohibit residential development in near proximity to heavy industrial, which is probably as it should be if you have it as existing heavy industrial. Yes, yes, Bill?
Just to be clear, we're talking about people who have built in the industrial area, right?
Yes. Across the street from it.
Now, across the street, there's residential on Five Mile, across the industrial.
So the residential, they're built in residential, it's just the border line's right there.
So that's their choice?
Can you be specific as to exactly what areas you're talking about, so we make sure that they are addressed in our revisions? You're saying Five Mile between Russian Lane and Salem Road, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Is that the only place?
Parts of Salem Road also adjoining general industrial, residential, or rural, or whatever you call it.
Originally, or?
Chubb, yes, Six Mile also.
Yeah, Chubb Road and Six Mile also.
You say five hundred feet, you're arming the people across the street on Five Mile, on the south side, with an ordinance that says, hey, you can't be there, they come in long after we did, now they're staying five hundred feet, you gotta get back.
Okay, so I think, I think we're clear here, that the bottom of the page, the five hundred, five hundred-foot thing can't be a standard, it has to be reworded somehow, so that it's not interpreted as such, because it's completely incompatible with the way the township has put residential development adjacent to heavy industrial along Five Mile Road in that one section of the township.
Just divided by the road, that's all it is, is divided by the road, and that's got five hundred feet.
Exactly, okay. So we know that, that's on the list of things to take care of.
Thank you for your observation, that's very good.
Any other items related to this section before we move to the next one? I'm sorry? Any other observations on this first section before we turn the page?
No, I'm okay with five oh one. Personally, anyone else on five oh one?
No. Okay.
I was looking at two on Part B. Any salt, I'm assuming that's a salt pile, or salt that's inside of a building, don't they normally cover it, put it inside of a building? Like the county does down here at Pontiac Trail?
Right, I mean, this is essentially, understanding what the materials are, wherever it's stored, what those materials.
Okay.
It's just the impact assessment requirement, things you have to declare, and then make sure that we work with the township to ensure that it's done safely. Okay. So, next is what section?
Section forty point five oh two, which is the junkyard or salvage yard section. This is essentially specialized type of outdoor storage, but you're getting into both storage and dismantling recycling of motor vehicles, and travel trailers, mobile homes, those types of objects. The section actually follows what's in the current ordinance, I believe there are a couple of tweaks to it, but the section essentially follows what's in the current ordinance for this, for this land use. Call any.
Do we have any such facilities in the township? Any junkyards?
I don't believe we, I don't believe we have anything that meets the definition right now.
Okay, so these are, these are provisions that would provide for a proposed new use basically.
Okay, is a question? Can I ask a question?
Forty point four one one? Did we, I just got a question, since we were on five oh two, I saw, is there a section forty point four one one? Because I have a draft that has that.
There is, but we started on the five hundreds, that's all.
Okay, well, we pared on it, okay. All right, just then, my draft shows it after the five hundreds.
Oh, probably page just flipped over.
In the junkyard section there, I think Mr. Pennington would know about this, the incident that Salem had on Pontiac Trail with the guy that bought the horse farm and decided to bring in, what do you call it, like, repossess vehicles and put them in the storage barns and in the fields? Well, this, does this spell it, that can't be done anywhere here in the township? The guy did it for almost a year, and it was hard for Salem to get him out of there.
There's another area of the ordinance that I think would handle that more appropriately, than how we define junkyard.
Oh, okay.
Okay, junkyard. That would be, there's another section that talks about vehicles about current license plates and things of that nature, I think that that would be more appropriate than junkyard.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, sir? All right, let's go to section forty point five.
Could I just ask one question with respect to that section? I raise this only because it comes up in some later sections also involving particular uses. Five oh two, per one, such facilities shall be located on a paved primary road, and basically excludes anything along Chubb Road, which is here, is there a necessity that it be a paved road, because it comes up, I'll point it out as we go on, but that's.
I think that's a very reasonable thing to bring, we can, we can address that, because you're actually right, with the general industrial being on, not on a paved road.
And then, just for a point of clarification, on eleven there, you talked about all drives, parking areas, loading and unloading areas shall be paved, so there's some parking areas that the storage of the vehicles would be, or just for plated vehicles?
That's plated vehicles. The term parking area of parking is defined, it makes it, they're just vehicles that have current plates and people are driving.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
There you go.
Five oh three.
Well, this, this is, I think, a section that most of the concern was about tonight. It has been updated from the current ordinance, outdoor storage general, in a couple of ways, that just, I'll just kind of highlight a couple of changes. The first one, I think, has been brought up tonight, that it does require that outdoor storage areas be outside of, outside of the yard setback areas. The setback areas are basically defined the buildable area of the lot, as this is, ordinance is drafted. The current ordinance does not require the outdoor storage to be outside of those side and rear yard setbacks. It does require it to be generally out of the front yard, it has a couple of different definitions for that. The second change is related fence height. The current ordinance says that the fence for outdoor storage must be at least seven feet tall, and does not put a maximum height limit on it. The height limit of the, for the overall, for the zoning district would apply, but that's, that's a very tall fence. And that it must equal the height of the materials that are stored there. This ordinance says that the fence must be at least six feet high, as it's written, and no more than eight feet high, which, which essentially limits the height of the stored materials to eight feet. The, the current ordinance does require screening, but it gives the planning commission the ability to define that it's unnecessary, and essentially waive it. And that would apply, I think, was discussed tonight, in between lots that are both zone general industrial, the planning commission has the ability to waive screening, or what the current ordinance calls buffering requirements of landscaping. The, the proposed ordinance has a similar provision related just to the side and rear yard screening, so you still have that ability, but it's specific and it doesn't, it doesn't apply to the front yard, it requires screening the front yard no matter what. Those are the significant changes. I think that the discussion tonight about the yard setbacks in particular is quite a valid one, because that is, that is a significant reduction in the area where materials could be stored. The, this section does require a landscape strip in the front, that has to be, has to be improved with landscaping, and it does require transition buffers where the general industrial puts a lower zoning classification, or existing residential land use or existing residential zoning districts. It does, there is a buffer requirement, both in the current ordinance and in this one. I think that we can eliminate the language related yard setback areas, it's probably, it's not necessary to get where we need to go. The, I think the question, one, probably the first question, with the planning commission's committee, I agree that we would just simply make that change. A question for the planning commission is related to fence height, because it is a significant difference between the current ordinance, it's seven feet, no maximum, seven foot minimum with no maximum height. And I have seen fences that are twenty-five feet tall, but there's a facility down in Monroe County where they, they have similar requirement, and the gentleman wanted to store twenty-five feet high, and he built a twenty-five foot tall fence. Whether that's something you prefer, or if you do want to have some, have a maximum height, or that type of screening fence.
Council, may I have an address or something where I can go see these existing fences?
The fence I'm thinking of is in, it's in London Township. Forgive me, I can't recall the room, it's in London Township.
I believe you mean the existing fences in the township.
Oh, there's no, certainly no twenty-five foot tall fences currently.
I mean, any of the solid fences in the industrial screening each other at the moment? Why?
The, the ordinance does require a screen fence, that's simply what it says, whether they exist in the current industrial property, I think, is the question, but that's what the current ordinance requires, it's a seven foot high, opaque fence, solid fence. So that was changed to this draft, to see, that's minimum six, maximum eight.
So it's, it seems like, just from my casual travels around the township, that if, even though we require a seven foot high fence, not all properties seem to have such a fence?
Well, one thing to keep in mind, especially this applies fairly commonly with industrial land, where the industrial zoning's been there for many years, may the activities there simply predate the current regulations, and because there's no need for them to come back to you through the site plan review process, they don't, they are, they are allowed to remain as they are. You might call them non-conforming or grandfathered in, simply because they have not had to come before you for a site plan review, which is when that requirement is triggered. So until there's some sort of need for that review process, they are allowed to operate as they were lawfully constructed.
So if I maybe extend from that, then what you're saying is, is that this new ordinance is not inhibiting any current uses that are present in the township, but it only, you know, if there's changes in, let's say, what's allowed and what isn't allowed, that only comes up in the context of new uses or significant changes to existing uses?
I think the most likely scenario that would bring, bring one of the existing lots that were developed many years ago in, for site plan review is construction of a new building, a significant building, because you can construct certain size accessory structures without going through site plan review. But when you get to the point where you're constructing a new principal building, or a large warehouse, or something like that on the property, that triggers site plan review, then it's coming to you. One of the things, the other, one thing that does come up, again, this is a protection related to, to existing properties in the township, is the new ordinance does have a section called non-conforming sites. This is, this is brand new, it's something we put in, recommend you put into every ordinance when we update it. And it's a section that when an existing operation comes to you through site plan review, it basically lays out some priorities for you to, to ask for as part of, to be updated, and those are health and safety related. And then it, it, and it has a list of, of other things that sort of you might call a menu of choices, of other items that could be updated, like landscaping, or lighting improvements, or the noise issue, addressing noise, whatever those things might be, that the applicant can choose, it was usually two or three, I don't recall which it is, there's about ten items, I think you have to choose three to take care of. And most of those items are things they take care of actually as part of the update anyway, because they're part of, usually part of the business model to make those kinds of improvements. It allows you to review a plan for an existing site without requiring them to meet every current requirement. So if they don't have a fence, and you find there's no health and safety reason for them to have a fence, you, that non-conforming site section allows you to look at that site plan without requiring them to meet all of the current ordinance.
If I could ask, the way the fences are shown here, what's your opinion of that?
Well, I'll address that. Under the ordinance, I think you're correct, it says in C four of the current ordinance, the area for such storage shall be fenced on all sides except in the general industrial district, unless, and then it goes on to say, unless the planning commission determines fencing is not necessary due to adjacent land uses of similar type and character, the fence shall not be less than six feet in height. So right now, in the general industrial district, no fencing is required under the ordinance. Under the current proposal, says the storage area shall be enclosed with a solid wall, or opaque fence of at least six feet, or more than eight feet in height. So the heights, obviously, there's no. So the height, obviously there's no objection there to the extent of limiting height. What I would ask for is that that provision, which is three, provide that if adjacent to residential or rural and that there is no street, then a solid wall or required fence may be, may be required at that time. But there's no logic to require fencing in the general industrial because it's not required now. There's no logic to it based on, I think, comments that they've made in the past and members of the industrial district have made in the past. So I think that this is, that's a significant change to the ordinance from where we're at currently. We put in, induce a large cost to the potential people within that area. They wouldn't just be building new buildings, they wanted to build an addition on there. If there's some other change requires site plan approval, such an addition, suddenly the next planning commission could say, "Oh, no, we want a fence all the way around there," or "We want a wall all the way around there." Most of these people are back to a landfill, you know, so a lot of this doesn't make sense as far as what the fencing would even do. You know, given the fact that we already have transition buffers and things along anything that may be viewed to be rural or residential.
So, an observation I have is maybe rather than, the way it's written right now, right? It says, "You need a fence unless we say you don't need one." And maybe what it should do is it should say, we should list the situations in which you will need a fence.
Basically turn it upside down.
Flip it around and then let people look at the list of reasons why you would need a fence and see if we come to agreement on that.
Or keep it like the current ordinance and just say, "General industrial doesn't need a fence."
Right.
Right. Which is what it says now.
Unless it's
Well, let's say
Unless it's adjacent to
But I think there's, I think there are some situations where everybody would agree that a fence would be a worthwhile addition. Depending on what's immediately adjacent.
It would have bugged the residential, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that, I think that they can come up with a simple list of when you need to have a fence.
Yeah, that could be
So, but the height, the height is not a concern?
No, at all, at all.
Okay. Do you have something?
What you, what, what you don't seem to understand is when a person comes out to buy a piece of industrial property, he don't live there. He's coming to go to work every day. If I, if you need a piece of property to do your business and I have a steel fabricating shop next door or an underground, our trucking company, I'm only concerned in making money here. I don't care whether you've got a fence or not. If I want a fence, I'll put a fence up to protect my property, but I shouldn't be required to.
I, I hear you. I think that if you reformat this, you will find that there are not as many general conditions that require fences as you could imply right now, the way it's written. So I want to, I want to give them a chance to do that.
Can I just be clear? Eight, an eight fence maximum, isn't an issue?
There's no problem with that.
There's no problem with that as long as you don't say you can't have storage piles any taller than your fence. And right now the new, the wording in the new draft suggests that if you have an eight foot fence, you can't have any storage higher than your fence. And that's just insane.
That's going to be taken out.
Okay, so we, we do really have
That's what I'm asking. I couldn't, I just, it just seemed
Well, we, this is something where we can simply follow the current ordinance, which says seven feet. The question then becomes, how tall? Because current ordinance doesn't have a maximum height, so effectively the height, maximum height in the zoning district is what applies. And that's substantial. The, the question is how, how, how tall is reasonable then for a fence to be before it becomes something other than simply a screening device and becomes a
Then the answer is probably dependent on how far the fence is set back from what you're fencing off?
It does in some sense. Deal with that. One of the things is you, anybody can build a building and put the materials inside the building. And they can build a building that's tall as the zoning district allows. And so there's a difference between what's outside storage and what you can put inside the building. Obviously building a building is a substantial investment and fences much less is an investment.
So my, my only question, not being an expert, would be what's common in the adjoining region here? For this type of a situation for fence height?
Probably pretty similar. If I could ask the gentleman here
You've got light industrial over in, with more light along Old Hamburg Road.
You talked about the height of the fences. You said they're probably similar to what it is here in Fort Worth.
Well, I think there's a distinction here between a fence along a property line as a buffer between residential and rural and a fence around a pile of storage materials, whether it's mulch, soil, gravel, anything of those natures, which is totally illogical and infeasible to, one, you know, and it goes on the next section. That's why I didn't address the height of the fence with, about even covering it, containing and cover. It becomes a nonusable type of a storage area if you have to cover or inhabit limited eight feet. Seen when you've done piles, maybe your points will take. And if that, if that was the context in which the height of the fence was an issue, yes, eight feet is ridiculous to have a fence around a pile of dirt or a pile of mulch or something of that that's being stored in these industrial areas. So there would be opposition to any type of fencing and it goes on to number five as far as even how do you word it, cover stored material.
It sounds like my suggestion would be is that we simply continue with what the current ordinance requires. Since there hasn't been an issue with, with, like I said, with a two-story fence or anything like that, that where it's, that we simply carry over the existing requirement of a minimum seven foot high fence where that's where it's necessary, where it's required.
So we, we need to pick a height.
If we stay with existing ordinance, it's a minimum seven feet. And then maximum would be based on the issue, the material being screened. That would be, that would basically be coming to you as part of site plan review. You could review it as you review the site plan.
Okay.
But that's not a fence you can't see through. Not an oak plate fence like a wood fence. I, I've got half a mile of property and if I want to put an addition on it, I mean, I have to put, I would have to put a fence up you can't see through. We're talking about a cyclone fence or just a plain fence, not something you can see through.
You're not adjacent to rural or residential or
Next to that, that old dump that's, that's recreational.
But we're going to flip that, we're going to flip that requirement around and basically say only under the, the circumstances which
We need to understand the conditions because I don't, and that was where we were going to flip the ordinance around.
But we don't, we don't object to everybody else in the township having to do it except us. They don't, they don't allow them to have outside storage, so we are.
Okay. The, there was a comment on number five which relates to, has some standard related to stored items. Item A, storage of soil, fertilizer, sand and similar materials should be contained and covered for about outside impacts. I, I would suggest that we could simply put the word contained. Anytime you have an activity, you need to contain it within your site. So they would, they would simply show you on a site plan how they're containing it within the site. And I don't think in that case that necessarily needs to be covered as was mentioned.
What about B?
Going back to the original.
Yeah, we'll take care of B with the original, the current effect. Okay. We do have one other item that came up that didn't really get discussed tonight, but was discussed in earlier conversations. I want to bring it to your attention. The question is related to whether the outdoor storage facility has a building or not. The current ordinance differentiates when, when there, when there is a building under the current ordinance, the outdoor storage area has to be basically behind the building. It can't be between the building and the road right of way. When there is no building, the outdoor storage can, can go up into the, into that front yard area much closer to the road. And so in a sense, we penalize people that improve their property with a, with a, with a building. This ordinance, as it was, that's one of the reasons the setback language was put in there was to kind of standardize that and say, just simply stay out of the setbacks. My suggestion is, is that, that we, we do require the outdoor storage areas to be at least outside of the front yard setback. But there's been discussion about where, where it really is appropriate. The building, of course, has to be outside of the front yard setback. But the outdoor storage could be allowed to be closer to the road. There's a requirement for a landscape strip, whatever that width would be, 20 feet, 25 feet, whatever that number is. But the, the, the actual setback requirement, front yard setback for the general industrial district is much wider than that. Eighty-five feet. So essentially, we can, we can allow outdoor storage to be up, up to that, that landscape strip, 25 feet off the road right of way. We can require the outdoor storage area to be back behind the front yard setback at 85 feet. Or we could, we could keep the current ordinance scenario, which essentially punts into laws of both ways, whether or not, whether, the question is whether or not you have a building on the property. We'll go, Mr. Horton, and then we'll go back.
In 1981, that would, it was, we could go up to the green belt. The way it's written is if you've got a building on there, then you have to adhere to the setbacks. But, but it shouldn't make any difference whether a building's there or not. I've got a 500 foot lot and I want to put a 100 by 200 or 300 foot building 50 feet from the right-hand side. Why can't I put equipment up to the green belt on the other 400 feet? And that, that was, that was, I don't understand that. If you can do it when there's no building there, what difference between a building and nothing? If you build a building, you're, you're penalized.
Go ahead, Mr. Horton.
As I've mentioned, Mr. Horton, in a couple of open comments, we can resolve it to adjust that, that difficulty. I'll show you a revision. I think that your point is well taken and very suitable for the industrial area.
I just want to bring up one other thing, since we're talking about front side or front setback, 85 feet. If you'll recall, I think it was the October meeting I brought up, other communities have had far smaller front setback requirements than 85 feet. I don't know if we want to rehash that, but I don't think it's ever been addressed or related to that. I provided a summary like this, if you'll recall, at the October meeting, where other communities, Northville 50 feet, South Lion 60 feet, Plumus Township 40 feet. Those were comparables. Another issue that relates to that is also where we start measuring from. On the current ordinance, it's from the middle of the road. The proposed ordinance sits from the road right of way. Well, that can be 33 foot difference. So we could have an 85 foot plus a 33 foot, so now we have a 113 foot setback. Which are issues we need to address. And it's only significant to me when you start looking and saying, if people can maximize the use of their property for industrial, there's less demand for more industrial in the community. So therefore it's, we're being able to consolidate where the industrials add. If we can maximize the use of the property, it's just coming up with some logical point as far as what is the purpose of the setback. And in industrial, do we really care to have 85 feet of vacant land that requires cutting, mowing, whatever else, which nine tenths out of 10, from my experience, doesn't occur. People don't maintain those areas and that looks unsightly anyway. So the smaller the front setback is, the better off it's going to be. The reason for appearance as well as area maximizing use of their land at that point. I just want to bring that up because we've addressed it before and I don't think members have been here.
Yes, Mr. Pettit.
We've also looked at some of the other, other communities. And even though the present setback is 85 feet, I think that you would agree that that setback should be reduced. And I would suggest something like 65 feet would be appropriate. And that would be similar to what some of the adjoining communities have.
And that's your, from where?
From the right of way.
From the right, edge of the right.
The right of way, you know, whatever the right of way would be, right now, because the setback is 85 feet. And I would agree, pardon?
From the middle of the road.
No, from the right of way.
No, it's not from the right of way.
The setbacks are measured from the right of way.
Not on the current ordinance.
Yeah. Unless you can show me to the contrary, because all setbacks are measured from the right of way.
And it's, right, so that's, we will verify that, but there's, we'll double check. But well, if the, the proposed ordinance intended, everything's measured from the right of way.
Plus, I think that your point's worth taking. I think it, with your permission, we will reduce it back because I think that will justify it. We go back to the 85, however it's measured. Go back from 85, which is present, let's drop it back to 65.
And what do we require today?
85.
In today's
Yes, current ordinance is 85.
Which seems more restrictive than is common.
Other communities are less, as this gentleman has specified. 85 was what it was, we stayed with the current 85. But I think the justification, if we're looking at landscaping strip, which, you know, I was saying that would give it a visual profile, then it would, then it would justify to move it back to 65.
I'm amiable to that suggestion, I don't know how the rest of you feel.
I would like to know what they thought of that, just what they currently have.
Well, 65 and 33 potentially, you're up to 98 with setback. I'll find the section where's, you know, right now we're at 85.
You must be in the dimensional standards?
Right, yes. In this proposal, it says article 30, that applies. One thing I would want to point out, because we have, as I mentioned, we did get previously a comparison list with some of the other current communities around in terms of the setback requirements. And to some extent, we're dealing with a different type of industrial district in terms of the character of the, the, the plan and existing uses there. And also the restrictions around some of the activities of the kind that we have here in Salem Township. Plumus Township is somewhat ridiculous when it comes to outside storage in terms of the steering that away in a number of ways that they've, they've done with that. And, and they also, these, these other communities tend to lean more into the, especially Plumus Township, into the research side of things rather than into the, into the side that we have in our general industrial district. Which, that lends to the, to the size of the setback requirements in the standard.
Yes, if I could add, if the gentleman would like to look over the definition of setback in the definitions, it does say that everything is measured from the setback, existing ordinance right now.
Existing ordinance says front setback, an open space extending the full width of the lot, the depth of which is the minimum horizontal distance between the front lot line and the nearest line of the principal building. So from the front lot line. And all those people that are on Chubb Road, the front lot line is the middle of Chubb Road. They've been given a 33 foot easement on their property. So if we measure it from their front lot line, it would be to the middle of the road. Under the ordinance, which is 30.23 yard measurements, one, it says all front yards and street side yards required by this article shall be measured from the near boundary of the abutting road right of way of a public road or from the right of way or easement line of the private road. In other words, it's not from the front of their property line, but from where the road easement ends at that point.
On the right of way.
So, under the current, the way I read that, they have that 33 feet of the 85 feet is measured from the front property line, which is in the middle of the road. And now we're doing it from the edge of the road easement, so we lose that 33 feet. Now you're getting on 65.
If there's an issue here, if there's an issue here, we'll resolve it. But the existing ordinance, when you look at the definition of setback, says that setbacks are measured from the right of way line.
Can I say something about it? In the chair? In 1981, industrial was going to the center of the road because the five acre properties had to be split. So we decided to put, only in the heavy industrial on G1, we were using the center of the road as our, as our measurement.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, if there's, if there's
Excuse me, O1.
We will address the issue. All I'm saying is existing ordinance, when you look at the definition, it says that setbacks are measured from the right of ways. are measured from the right-of-ways.
And the right-of-way happens to be in the center of the road.
No, the right-of-way is whatever the road is. If it's a 66-foot right-of-way, that means 33 feet.
Right, but what Bob was saying back in 2001, to make those five-acre parcels, we were going to the center of the road.
That's agreed, no problem with that.
So that's why we're getting to the center of the road.
Yes, that's agreed, there's no problem with that. All I'm saying is, when we're looking at setbacks, existing ordinance and the ordinance before this one, did measure from the right-of-way, even though the property went to the center line of the road.
If I may, the definition, the key definitions under lot lines, front lot line, which defines, it is, it's not a parcel line when it comes to the front lot line, but defines the front lot line as separating the lot, the line separating the lot from the street. And so it is defined as that street line going over the road right-of-way line, for zoning purposes.
Okay, so, if you watch through this, I don't know what, what's the right-of-way on Chubb Road, 60 feet or something?
66, I believe.
66, so what you're saying is, is the current ordinance would be interpreted as, the setback would be, from the center of the road, would be 33 feet to get to the edge of the right-of-way, plus another 85 feet.
That's correct.
And that's what's allowed today.
That's correct.
Even though that may not be what's strictly followed on some of the parcel plans that have been there.
I don't know what's wrong with you.
Because you have existing use. And your recommendation, as I hear it right now, is to take and reduce that 85 feet to 65 feet.
That is correct.
Pardon?
That is correct.
Okay, which would then put the total at 98 feet from the center line on Chubb Road, rather than 118. That seems like a reasonable proposal to me.
I got a question on the, as far as I understand, you're going to work that out. My other question is, on Section 3.19, you've got the new right-of-way measurements, okay? Now, you say currently, Chubb Road is 66 foot. Is that, is that going to be what is going forward? Or, because I'm, I know me personally, it's on six miles, 33 foot, then 85. Now, what you're talking about here, and some of these, is bumping up the distance on the right-of-ways, changing them. I don't know, I mean, are we going by, how are, what are the current, what is the current right-of-way on Chubb Road, say?
66, as I understand it, correct.
Is that what we've been using for all site plans, say, in the last 10 years?
Hard like, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever is existing.
Okay, because if we're determining, if you look at some of the proposed right-of-ways here, I mean, it affects not only the industrial, like this proposed, like Gotherson Road between Joy Road and M14, it's like 86 feet.
Could you help me understand, what's the section we're looking at?
3.19, it's got the right-of-way requirements for all districts, and what they're going to do.
This is a section that, what it does is put into the ordinance, defines essentially the planned future right-of-way for these roads, and it is carried out from the master plan into the zoning ordinance. And so, where Chubb Road may have a 66-foot right-of-way today, this list of roads in the section defines it as having its desired future right-of-way of 86 feet. And basically, that allows for left-hand termini. If that road is ever improved, paved, it would allow it to be three-lane, so I would do a left-hand termini. The, this provision is in the current ordinance, so it's simply carrying it over from the current ordinance to the new one. There's no change to it, it's just been carried through. Now, should it be carried through as, or without change, that's a important question. But this is also the area where really the road commission has the ultimate authority on this. They decide how much right-of-way they feel they need to have on these roads. This is simply a, essentially, the townships expressed preference. But these roads are controlled by the road commissions, they have the ultimate decision-making power.
Where in the current ordinance are these numbers?
I believe it's actually the same section. Oh, no, it's, I'm sorry, in the current, it's Section 60.30.
Because if we use a setback, it's not going to make a difference then, whatever side the road is, right? I mean, no other side of the road. And we don't have any control of that. If we keep using the same definition from the setback, then 65 is still the 65 for the property, correct?
Yes, right, yeah, we, exactly. Essentially, the road commission, if they, if they found they had a need for an issue right-of-way, they would have to negotiate with the property owner to deal with that issue. We would simply review a site plan based on whatever the right-of-way is.
I disagree. I hate to say this, but I talked to the person that's ahead of the county, Mrs. Cheryl Sidal, and she's the director of engineering for the county, and she also gave me a map, which I can't find, I'm going to give a copy to all you folks. That's true, what he said is true. If Gotherson Road went through from Brookville to Five Mile, because they're widening Five Mile up to Chubb, another, up to 86 feet too, then you get to Chubb, you make a right turn, you go up Chubb, it's 86 feet. Gotherson Road is not going to go through in our lifetime, so we don't really need a left-turn line, but it's never going to be paved. So why would you take something, they lost their planner in 2005, and this is proposed back then, and a planning commission for the county had nothing to do with what they want today. We tried to get the Gotherson Road extension through, and it was turned down, and now you want, because they didn't have Gotherson Road going through, you're going to add another 20 feet to the road right-of-way on Chubb Road, which then we have to go back.
I hear your question, so I'll just, that's section in the proposed zoning ordinance, that's for informational purposes, or is it, it's intended to be used as the reference information when a planner, when establishing setbacks on partials?
I could answer. We started off by saying interpretation. Let's do this with your permission. The county has control over the roads, they have plans on right-of-ways. This ordinance is regulatory. I don't think it would hurt the integrity of the ordinance, the validity of the ordinance, the enforcement of the ordinance, or anything, if we took that section out altogether.
Then let's do that.
We'll do it with your permission, okay? Because we all know that the county owns the roads, this was an effort to replicate what the county's intentions were.
Yeah, but that map had a lot of other roads they were widening too.
Yeah, that makes sense.
There was a point in time when Chubb Road was on the county's plan to be 120-foot right-of-way.
But that was because of Gotherson Road.
No, it was before Gotherson Road. It went back to a lot of things, but fortunately, for you guys, that has gone by the wayside. So removing this section of the ordinance and simply relying on what the county standards are at the time of development, or at the time of road, when new roads are constructed, let's do that.
Thank you. Yes.
All right.
I just wanted to see, based on what they project in the future, because they're licking and paved the roads that are out there already, much less.
Quite well taken. That brings us back to this outdoor storage section. I wanted to mention one other item, that's item number four. And I wanted to bring it up, because this is, the section deals with screen, and my thought is, based on our discussion tonight, to do exactly the same thing we did with the fence provision, and essentially flip it, to say, screening is required under these specific circumstances, as it relates to what's around the property, and otherwise is not required, just as we did with what we're going to do with the fence provision with your region.
On item five, where it talks in terms of contain, can you describe more so in the extract what you meant by contain?
I can, I can take care of that.
Okay, are we moving forward now? No, we're making very good progress, and the collaboration in the group here is to be commended, okay? We're behaving very well, so let's just keep going.
That brings us into Section 40.504, which is self-storage warehouses, the requirements are on page 42. And this is mini-storage, basically, mini-storage facilities. And these standards have been updated, we have the same issue here, that I mentioned about paved primary road, and we'll take care of that. But essentially, this is, these standards are similar to other communities in terms of what's expected from this type of facility.
I have number five. Why would that be paved inside your storage area?
Well, that's fairly common, actually, for this type of facility, not necessarily for general outdoor storage, but for the mini-storage facilities, it's fairly common to do that.
Great, is yours, is yours?
Yes. But not as, not as outside storage. I mean, the only comment I would have, I don't, and item six is the decorative masonry construction, you might get something out of there, but it's really not going to enhance. I understand you're looking for visual appeal there, but really, the enhancement of that is minimal.
Could that be taken care of mainly by the landscaping along the, so we say landscaping strip along the main road?
That's more, what you want to achieve is going to be achieved out there. Yes, you are right in that, but I mean, it doesn't matter to me if you want to put that in there or not, because I'm, I've already started what I got.
Do you think it's a good requirement written here?
I don't think it makes a difference, really. I don't think you really, I understand it's tried to be something more visually appealing, I don't know whether you're really going to achieve that.
It does, the decorative masonry is like, it can be brick, they would be brick, but more typically, it's the, it's what they sometimes refer to as split-faced concrete block, which is really just, concrete blocks that have a little bit of a texture on the front. And when you have, when you line those fronts up along, it does have a great visual appeal, it does make a difference in terms of the character of the site. It's not a huge expense, because it's really, you can only do that on the ends of the building, you can't do it along the sides where the doors are. But it does, it does tend to make a difference in terms of that visual character.
So would that be like, you know, like, if it's for, like, the main front part of the road, or, I mean, if it's?
No, this, this is such a requirement on the building, so it'd be on both ends. I think the idea is that, while the back end may face a farm field now, what it may face in the future, we don't know. And so, and should the farmer be looking at corrugated metal?
It's for new, it's for new, not existing, right?
Right, there would be no requirement of existing buildings.
So do we need to clarify that statement?
I guess, screens.
So, to me, when I read through this, it seems somewhat restrictive with the provisions for the screening and the decorative block and all of that, and I'm wondering, I mean, and I'm trying to compare that with my personal experience, where it seems like the units that we have here in the township are quite reasonable, and I don't believe they comply with those requirements.
And this is really, this is a policy decision of the funding commission. Like I said, this was an item that we recommended, because it's used in other communities, but it is entirely your policy choice as to whether or not you want to have it in the ordinance.
We are talking heavy industrial, right?
Well, actually, this falls into both the light industrial and the heavy industrial, as it's drafted.
Light industrial.
Or does it change?
The condition of use.
Section 40 says, oh, industrial, research, laboratory.
It is also, it's allowed as a principal permitted use, simply the site plan review, in the two industrial districts, it's allowed as proposed as a conditional use in the heavier commercial districts as well.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we have to get this chart out and look.
I've got one book, Item 8B, okay, talking about the outdoor storage. I think that, I think Item 8B, I don't think that even needs to be in there, because if you're anywhere outside the industrial district, you're not allowed to have outdoor storage. So the same outdoor storage regulations for the rest of the district should apply the same to self-storage in the industrial district.
Well, this is, this is actually allowing an area of outdoor storage, associated specifically with this mini-storage facility, so.
Yeah, but I don't think you want to allow outdoor storage in other districts, even if it is in the storage. So I think that whole Item B should be just struck out. Not unless you're saying you want to have outdoor storage in these other, in light industrial and general commercial with it. There was a proposal on Chubb Road to forean outside storage that didn't get through the planning commission, but there, you know, half of those properties back are light industrial, the front half are residential, and it didn't, somewhere it didn't get through the planning commission, but it was brought up to be. If you, if you wanted to do this, just like before, except in heavy industrial. But, I mean, if you want to leave it there that way, then it should say, does not apply to heavy industrial. Right. Because that could be interpreted, even though I'm in heavy industrial, saying strictly as mini-storage, that I cannot have, that I have restrictions on my outdoor storage in particular. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do see that. I guess my suggestion to the planning commission, maybe this first question, this is written to, as I said, this is, this is an activity, mini-storage is an activity that crosses between commercial and industrial. It certainly started out as, you put it in the industrial districts, but from a market perspective, people don't want to go into the industrial area to store their household goods, they want it to be more convenient than that. And so what's happened is, is that the industry has morphed a bit, and you see it in commercial areas, you see it in a number of different ways, U-Haul is doing various things where, you see it in some of the commercial areas. And so that's why in this ordinance, we've proposed it as a conditional use in two of the commercial districts, so that you could consider whether it's appropriate on a particular site, based on those conditional use requirements. But mainly because we're seeing from a marketing, market perspective, that that's where the activity's going. I think the first question is, do you, would you want to have outdoor storage of recreational vehicles, which is sometimes, often accompanies a mini-storage facility? Would you want to see that in the commercial districts? Or would you rather see outdoor storage strictly limited to the industrial districts?
I have trouble jumping between the charts.
Well, most times with the chart, you'd be looking for one, you're not jumping back and forth repeatedly, you're just, you're looking at one land use, and then going to the, here are the standards applied to the land use.
Okay, so, but we have to jump, you have to jump to the land use table in Article 20, as a cross-reference. I can't, do you know, I can't, what page in Section 20, you were talking about?
It's on page nine.
Self-storage warehouses?
Yeah, it's at the top of page 20-9.
Got it. Okay, so I see conditional use in general commercial and highway commercial, and permitted use in light industrial and heavy industrial. Which makes sense to me. And then my only other, my only other question here, when I've gone through this, is, Item two, right, we say such facilities should be located on a paved primary road, right, but I look at primary roads in Salem Township, in some cases, they're not paved, such as Chubb.
Right, and I made to note that.
And so, again, you know, however we're handling that, that should apply throughout the ordinance, I believe.
Yeah, I made to note that, we'll make that change.
Five Mile's the same kind of deal.
Something about the screen.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it related to five oh four?
Oh, I'm sorry, and, and this one, when it talks in terms of screening both in, seven and in eight B, it talks in terms of having screening from all road right-ofways and abutting uses. Even if it's compatible zoning, do we still need to have screening in there between general industrial uses? Or can we eliminate that with regards to the screening between common, common zoning accepted?
With your, with the planning commission's agreement, we can follow what we were just doing with the outdoor storage related to screening. They'd be specific on what needs to be screened. I think, I think the key really with, with these is having required the landscape strip on the front, and they require screening on the side of rear where it's, where it's needed, basically, with the bus.
Presidential activities.
That works for me.
Your question ran on B, three B. I want to follow that.
Eight B.
You had mentioned that, that may, you know, block taking off. What is your concern about that?
On eight E? It's actually, it's actually restricting me where I can store, as opposed to if I was just under general industrial.
Which means on general industrial, you can store anywhere?
Yes.
Well, I, my thought is, on that, on this eight, item eight B, which is, we're talking about storage of recreational vehicles and recreational equipment, that we simply make a reference to the outdoor storage section and say, if, where that's allowed, you, you know, they can be, be those.
Outdoor storage would be in terms of screening, not, I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
Outside industrial, this would not apply.
I can understand if you want this to apply outside, not industrial, but it doesn't say that.
That's why, what Ronnie said is we'll make a note where it refers it to the industrial district for the standards about those.
Basically, it's saying that, that you can have, what would happen is you can have mini-storage warehouses in those two commercial districts, but you couldn't have the associated recreational vehicle storage outside in those districts. So I think, along those, what you were just trying to say.
The other issue in this section involved the definition of recreational vehicles and recreational equipment. It refers to must be licensed or on highways. The old ordinance, I think the definition of recreational vehicles and equipment included boats, boat trailers, automobiles. Can you take a look at that and make, give a bad clue?
Whether, sir.
Do the definition of the...
There's a licensing or registration requirement for those as well, but then basically, that's...
Well, that's operating highways, so.
We could take a look at that.
And specifically, I think it included boats, boat trailers, things of that nature. So a boat may be, have to get a license for boats to operate on water. Storage, you don't need one, so.
Through the chair.
Yes.
There are a lot of motorhomes and recreational vehicles that they park them in, in, in these RV storage areas, and they don't have license plates that are up to date. They only run the license plates, like, for six months. They're not licensed all the time. If they, but they have to have a place to store them because they're not allowed anywhere else. So if you get your, you know, you're kind of handicapping the person that has the RV storage, not that you're going to check or anything like that, but, you know...
That's, that's where my head's at, is, is it's like, you're, you're trying to prevent the storage of abandoned and nonusable vehicles. And so they're trying to find a way to write it, and it's, you know, that gets down to how you do practical zoning enforcement rather than, you know...
A lot of RVs, a lot of RVs are seasonal, seasonal plates, seasonal registration.
So, so I don't know what the, what the best way to do it is, but you need, you need, you know, it's very difficult when you write it subjectively and say, you're not allowed to have unrunning or abandoned vehicles or... So, so I don't know. You know, I will tell you that it's not here in Salem, but you go other communities, and it's like they do license plate searches for cars parked in driveways. I mean, that's not uncommon.
You can't even have a one-ton dual-wheel truck parked in a driveway alone. You get ticketed.
So I don't have, I, I don't have a good answer. I would think that, I would think we're safe because I believe the zoning administrator has many other things to do than check license plates. And he'll never get around to checking. Okay.
Are there any other...
What else with four oh five? Or five oh four, I'm sorry? Okay, will you just keep going?
No, if I could make a suggestion, we're on industrial mindset. Even if that's all we accomplished tonight, I think we've done very well. Would it be appropriate, because I know these gentlemen threw us a question on dimensional standards, and I'd like to address some of the dimensional standards that would key to some of the things we've already talked about. So if we could go over to the dimensional standard.
That's article thirty-one.
We, we've been following your recommendations, and that makes perfect sense to me, and I'm sure the audience would...
So, okay, well, so we want to get that taken care of, so we've got the package.
Actually, that's it. You know, once you do that, our questions are kind of...
Take care of it.
Thank you.
We want to get this prior. Okay, so if we could do that with the planning commission, commission lets do that, either. Package itself.
So in article, article thirty, the first page is this large table. And the industrial districts are on the, on the right-hand side of the table, light industrial, general industrial. And there are standards there as to whether or not the property has sewer availability or does not have sewer availability, changes the numbers. When we set this table up, we followed the current ordinance, which, which has that same kind of a format. There was a, there was a question about setbacks. You can see the setbacks in the lower half of the table, the lower right-hand corner. Front yard at eighty-five feet, it's actually eighty-five feet for both the light industrial and the general industrial. And then the side yard setbacks vary a bit between the two.
Light industrial is sixty-five feet?
Put in the chart, this is where that eighty-five goes to sixty-five.
What are you thinking on the side setbacks, Ron?
We didn't change the side setbacks, so with the planning, if you want to talk side setbacks, that's okay, but we, none of the standards, the dimensional standards were changed. It's exactly like the existing ordinance is. But we have said, you know, the eighty-five should be sixty-five, and that'll be represented here.
So you're...
Has everybody seen the chart?
Your front yard will change to sixty-five in the light industrial and then the general industrial, and also the street side yard. So if you have a side yard abutting another street, that will also go to sixty-five in those two zoning districts.
Through the chair.
Now, if we, if we go to sixty-five feet in light industrial, in heavy industrial, general industrial, what's, what's your opinion about RRA at seventy-five feet? Is that...
Which one?
What's your opinion about RRA at seventy-five feet?
I think you could, you could talk about that one as well. That's a different district. It's not heavy industrial, talking about, you know, the technological type of thing. So we could talk about that one as well. You know, I have a problem with that one. The RRA is something that usually has more landscape in it. When we were dealing with Johnson and Coles, that was heavily landscaped, you know, and the setback there, whether it was sixty-five or seventy-five, really didn't make a difference. But they did go with the seventy-fives. So it, it, that's a policy decision. I don't think as far as any restriction in the ordinance, it would be detrimental to, to say it has to be seventy-five. I think that's different from discussion. Right now, I want to make sure the industrial's taken care of.
Yeah, okay.
So have we, have we been refocusing on light and general industrial? Is everybody okay with what was proposed there?
I have only one suggestion on the setbacks that I have seen in some other communities. We have a lot of general industrial that fax up to, like, the railroads or the dump. Are we really trying to prohibit that building going closer to the dump or the railroad track? I mean, where you have that area like that, I mean, would twenty-five foot be unreasonable to have your building within the dump and the power lines? Or the railroad track? I mean, are we trying to save that space in there, or?
I think there's, there is a, the railroad tracks actually is a, is a historical issue that there was, the railroads didn't like having buildings right next to the railroad tracks because, and it was primarily related to derailments. And the amount of damage that could be caused, you know, was minimal if there's no structures near the railroad tracks. So I, I think there's a valid, still a valid reason to have, have a setback from the railroad tracks. Whether there's one from the landfill is a question. Yes.
I've got a question. I'm at five in Chubb. I own five acres there, so if I'm not, I'm, I don't know if I'm understanding you correctly.
Which corner?
The, would be the northwest corner, the vacant parcel there. Now, so I would have sixty-five foot setback from Chubb Road and sixty-five foot setback from Five Mile, and would, would one be...
Both road running just.
Even though, like, to the north of me is the recreational property, which is the old Plymouth dump. I mean, there's no way that I can get anything changed there, even though on Chubb, maybe get a little closer, use the property a little...
Or we're, we're going from eighty-five back to sixty.
And is that to the center of the road there?
Or, or right away.
That, that's, that's a plate they're going to split, and they want to split that, that off, that one parcel in the corner off. And so when you're splitting the two and a half acres, then you're supposed to go to the center of the road. That was the deal we made.
I'm just thinking how I'm going to be crunched in over there, because we were originally, I, I was under the impression we went to the center of the road. But now we're at the right-ofway, and then we're going to have sixty-five on both sides. I don't know if we're going to be able to get a two-and-a-half acre parcel there, so we're going to be kind of...
Well, the two and a half acres is, is like...
Yeah, but we've got...
It's a zoning requirement.
Yeah, and the acreage requirement is, is, as you said, because that's your parcel, and so that, that goes out to the center line of the road.
Right, but I only have, I only have two hundred feet on one side, so if I split it, I got two hundred feet. And now you're going to bring me back to another sixty-five on the one side, plus sixty-five this way. I'm getting crunched in, you know what I'm saying? There's not going to be any room there for the building.
Right, I, I certainly, I understand that.
I mean, but if there's something, maybe I can bring the plot plan, and you guys kind of, two weeks to do something. Maybe, I guess I'd have to appeal something, or we have to...
If there's a situation, I guess, through the chair, we would gladly look at it for you and kind of give you maybe an idea. We want, we want to be fair, but what we're doing now is even making more fair than it does the existing one.
Okay. At this point, I guess I'd just bring up with regards to looking at the setbacks, under the transition buffer, the transition buffer is twenty-five feet, and that's in addition to any other setback. So if we're at sixty-five feet, transition buffer's then an additional twenty-five feet. Now we're up to ninety feet.
Transitional is not on the roadway. It's on the side.
So the exception to the transitional buffer is, it doesn't apply if there's a roadway that, is that correct?
The tran-, the landscape is on the roadway. Transitional is not on the roadway. That's on the side here.
Okay, well, but if you're at a corner, it's possible you could...
You can get a landscape strip on both, on both road running just.
Okay, but there would be no requirement for a transitional buffer if you're, if you're on roadway then, right?
Yeah, or if you're, the zoning next, next to it is, let's say, industrial.
How about residential? Who was it residential across the road?
I got five miles. I'm not sure. I'm going to be straight with you.
No, right.
We had to look at this.
Well, that's why I'm raising it, because at least the way it reads to a degree...
It, it says on transition buffer, I'm looking here at article thirty, on page thirty-six, which is the standards for, thirty-seven, actually. It's the standards for transition buffers. And it says the transition buffer, it is, transition buffer, what this is, is basically a little additional setback area that has to be landscaped and screened. So when, when industrial activity is next to residential, or we require a little extra space. And it says that transition buffers shall be provided along every lot line except the front lot lines, which is contiguous to or across the road right-ofway from such abutting use groups that that is the lower zoning buffer. So...
Should that provide for front lot lines or side lot lines, which is contiguous to or across the road right-ofway? Therefore, we would not need a transitional buffer for that corner lot scenario?
Basically, the street, on a corner lot, right? We, we can deal with that.
So therefore, no transition buffers ever required when you're on a road adjacent to residential then? Is that the way you're reading that?
Only on the side yard.
Yeah, the interior yard.
That doesn't button it though.
Right, you gotta be directly connected to it, like, right there.
And that's what the existing wording says.
I just want to make sure that's what it, is that, is that the intent then?
That is.
If there is no roadway, you don't have to have that transition, if there is a roadway...
Not on the roadway. Sure. The landscape strips on roadway.
Doug, through the chair. The only place that that happens is at seventy-five, seventy-two Salem Road. The Parham, the old Parham residence where the pond is out close to the road, it's like up by the school. When you come down, there's a pond in front of the house. The house sits way back off the road. That is the only piece of property in the, that's adjacent to the heavy industrial. Next to that piece of property is, right now, a vacant piece of property that's about twenty-five acres. And behind that, I think I butt up against what, pardon my property, off Salem Road, I mean, off Chubb Road, on the very rear. I get a little bit of that property. One other thing we have to address is the green belt all the way around the property.
I think that, that we're addressing, that, that we talked about with the outdoor storage, we're, we're going to cover that in a minute.
Well, you're using, excuse me, we're using the new, boundary, I don't know what it's called, it's the bulk requirement, that you have fifty-foot setback for the heavy industrial on the side. You, you have this. It's a green belt. It's actually this here.
They're going to do away with that, though, I think, on the outdoor storage.
You're doing away with it?
On the outdoor storage areas, right?
Right, we, we've covered that. And we, when we talked about the outdoor storage requirements, we're going to address, we're going to address it, we'll bring back revised language. You can take a look at that.
Well, according to the old, the old ordinance, the setbacks were from a building. On the new ordinance, you're taking it from just setbacks. Well, that, why would you take, in the old ordinance, it says the setback is from, from the corner of a building, or, or... Uh, setbacks shall be measured from the outer edge of a building, or a roof. Uh, on a yard, on the yards, an open space in the same lot with a building. Front's building, side's building. But like I said, under this one, you, you're going to actually make the side yards what that says. We're not going to do that, right?
I didn't quite understand that.
We've got two over here. This is the old ordinance, and this is the new one.
I'm looking in the ordinance on page thirty-dash-twelve. Is that what we're talking about?
The, yeah, thirty-dash-twelve, the, the top, the top graphic, transitioned landscape strips. This may be a big time to just bring this up anyway. That the landscape strip is intended to overlap the front yard setback. It's part of, essentially, part of the front yard setback.
Okay, I can see that.
And then the transition strip, the transition buffer is, is, is an additional area. The question, I believe, was related to, to setbacks. Setbacks are any... Setbacks are in the ordinance basically to ensure that, that there, there's, there's a little space, or it's basically protecting one property from, from its neighbors, giving a little area of transition between the two. Both ordinances actually effectively treat setbacks the same way. What we've done in the, in the new ordinance is we, we've updated some definitions to make it more, more clear how setbacks are measured, but the, the effect is no diff, is there's no change in it. The, he's referring to a section of the ordinance that, that says that, that the yard setback shall be measured from, from the edge of the building or overhang. That's actually just simply saying where on the building, if you're measuring setback, where, 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 where the measurement's taken from. But really, a front yard setback is measured from the road right of way into the property, a side yard setback is measured from the side lot line into the property, whether, whether it's the current ordinance or the new one. There's no change there.
And what's the, what's the, I see the transition strip, and I was reading on page 30 dash six, right? That explains the transition strips, and the transition strip is only a side yard or rear yard requirement depending on the adjacent use, never in the front yard.
Exactly, yes.
And it's only in the cases where the adjacent use is rural or residential.
Yeah, he's only going back there.
Yeah, that's correct, okay. Do we require transition buffers in the current ordinance?
Yes.
And is the requirement of the new ordinance substantially different?
Yes.
Is the same?
I think the dimensions. The one, the dimensions are essentially the same, the one addition, actually, two, there are two additions to the list. The first one is public park, and now again, this is something, it's not a significant issue in the country at the moment, but, but it certainly could be in the future, that we're adding in that there would be a transition buffer related to, to a public park, that's on the adjacent property. The other one is, is rural uses, and that would be your farming activities, that they're, that essentially they would be treated the same as, as residential in requiring a transition buffer. The transition buffer is much smaller for rural uses than it is for residential. But the idea is to require a little space, you know, let's say we're talking about our outdoor storage area, and we're talking about allowing outdoor storage to be right up to that, that transition buffer. Well, essentially that would put, without a transition buffer from, from, from a farm field next door, would allow outdoor storage to go right up to the edge of that farm field. And the idea is to give at least a little bit of space there between the two.
But help me understand, you're, in that case, you're protecting the farm from the industrial?
Exactly.
And the industrial would be sacrificing the 25 foot strip?
Well, actually, it's, it'd be, it would be a 15 foot strip for...
15 foot strip?
No. No, no, I'm sorry. Okay, remount, I'll, I'll, I need my glasses.
It's 25.
It's 25 foot, you're right.
Oh, 25?
Okay, I, I see a question in the back, Ms. Hamilton?
Yeah, we, now we're talking about doing transition strips for farmers. What is the rationale for telling us we can no longer farm from fence road to fence road?
No, no, no.
That's what you just said.
This is a, this is a transition buffer on the industrial...
This is a question from the back of my line, too.
Thank you.
There, there is no requirement for a transition buffer for farmers. This is a transition buffer on the industrial property to protect the farm field. The farm field can go, the farm as they are right now, there's no limitation of that whatsoever.
Point of information, Doug, is there's nowhere in heavy industrial that adds so. The only place, the only place is on Salem Road where that pond is, when you're going down on, on our side, the first big house that sits way back off the road with the lake, that's the only place that is residential property that affords industrial. Anywhere else, no.
There's only one place.
You're right, that's the only place right now.
There's only one place.
And so, we don't, that's the only instance?
That's the only instance in the heavy industrial where it butts a residential piece of property is right there. I don't remember the name, but it used to be the Parham.
Well, this standard, this standard is in here, first of all, it covers all industrial, both line industrial in general. But also, this standard is in here because in the future, we may have additional land zoned industrial that does fall into this, this kind of a relationship. So the zoning ordinance has to do with, with that.
That element industrial, right?
Yeah, because, I mean, this, this applies to a large number of uses, right? That abut residential or rural uses.
Well, it applies, right.
Potential.
It does require a strip for basically commercial office and industrial activities where they abut residential or rural.
So, so, so you don't get to the end of the commercial property and it's a plowed field? I understand that.
All right. I'd like to approach and ask him a question because I couldn't, I was tongue tied.
Yeah. Yes.
Bob, we have a copy, this is it.
Well, this is the way, this is the way we're gonna have the, the heavy industrial, G1?
Yeah.
Well, if it had green belt, this is not there anymore.
On the front yard.
I'm, I'm talking about, according to the way the ordinance was read to me, it was all the way around the 50 footer.
We're only gonna do the landscaping along the road.
Thank you. May I answer my question? Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Where is the sale chase in that Mr. Horton is referring to?
Uh, Mr. Horton here?
Yes.
Ms. Earl has a question, she wants to know which specific lot has this problem?
The problem with the, if you go down Salem Road and you go past the, the entrance to the sewer, there's a house on the left up on the hill, and then there's another house with a pond, a huge pond in front of it, that's it, and the house probably sits a half, maybe 500 feet, maybe 800 feet off the road, way back in the woods.
Bob, it's Dobson's house.
Dobson's house.
Right.
Salem what?
I get the address, it's 75-71 Salem Road.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's a big white stone at the end of the driveway.
It's 75-71 Salem Road. That's the only place that abuts the industrial.
Yes, in the back?
I'm kinda confused now where we are on the agenda, 'cause I thought we were discussing Article 40. I'm not gonna stay a whole lot longer, and I hear two comments about elsewhere in Article 40, that you should like you were listening to.
In the sections of Article 40 that we talked about?
No, in, in...
Okay, well, we, we were gonna get to the other sections in Article 40 once we went through the dimensional that related to the industrial and heavy industrial.
Doug, I'm just going by your agenda, it says Article 40, then it says Article 30, and with all due respect, I've had two hours, I need to leave, and I'd like my comments ready to official record before I have to leave. I don't think it's unreasonable when it's on the agenda.
We're gonna finish what we're in the midst of here, and then we will go back to Article 40.
Doesn't matter, you have to leave. I understood that.
Well, try that, where, where do we sit right now? We talked about transition buffers in Section 11.
On the subject of transition buffers, could I just raise on paragraph F, which is on page 39 and seven? That's excluded area as far as determining lot coverage or lot floor area? Is there any reason for that to restrict the, delete the transition buffer area as part of the calculations for billable area? We're trying to eliminate that.
Essentially, what that, that item F requires in page 30 dash seven, by, by, by saying the transition buffer areas can't be used to, to calculate the floor area ratio, essentially reduces the, the size of the building you can put on the property. So if we, if we were to take that out, if we put a slightly larger building, it's not a significant difference. I can't imagine it unless, unless it's on a very large property with a mountain, a small, small percentage of total building area.
Are we creating a problem with that?
Well, I think by taking it out, it actually makes it easier to calculate those things.
Yeah, so if that was being considered, which is...
Yeah, that's why, yeah, I do, that's, that's how it comes.
All right.
I think that covers the dimension.
The only other thing is on permitted barren encroachments, which is G, I think it implies it, but I'm not sure if I saw it anyplace, parking in the front yard is permitted in general industrial, is that correct?
Well, the parking is dealt with in the, in the, in the off-street parking article, all the requirements that have to be dealt with.
So it's covered in that section, and, and under the 39 and 12, it shows parking permitted in the front yard, I just wanted to...
Right, it, it's covered in the parking article.
Thank you.
All right, we have anything left here in Article 30 related to the industrial section?
The only other thing I would have is in...
Oh, okay. I have a hand up in the back.
I was just curious, did we determine that we were gonna reduce the rear yard setback on all of the people that are on Chubb Road on the east side that back up the power lines, then back up to the dump?
I, I didn't hear you clearly.
I'm sorry, the, the rear setbacks, well, 50 feet on rear yards, um...
It's not there.
Huh?
You just got rid of it.
No, that's, uh, you got rid of landscape strips, but there's still a 50 foot setback from rear yards?
For building.
For buildings. Even though we back up to the power lines that again back up to the dump, I mean, we're 300, 400, 500 feet from the dump, and there's nothing back there but Edison property. So we aren't reducing rear yard setbacks, is my first question. Second question is, I'm still a little bit unclear on the, on the storage in front of your building, I'm in a situation where my building is like 500 feet back, is where the front of my building is, and for example, if I decide I wanna add 10 feet to the side of my building for some reason, now all of a sudden, I will have to comply with no storage in front of my building, or what, what, what happens there?
No, you're gonna be okay.
I don't know how we're handling, perhaps...
You're gonna be okay, you're gonna be able to go all the way to the front, except for your thing.
I think it's difficult, let's, let's, we'll deal with that, I'd like actually to, to get that clarification on the landfill, because that, that was a question I was gonna bring up as well. And this is again, a policy decision of the planning commission to decide whether or not you, you want to, essentially provide relief to those properties that are adjacent to the landfill by allowing them either a reduced rear yard setback for, for buildings or no rear yard setback. And we have, there's some, we have, in the commercial district right, right here in the Hemlock, there are occasions where we allow zero setback or could allow zero setback, essentially where buildings above one another, you create the storefront, the long storefront of, of buildings. So this, the question really is, do we need a, a rear yard setback where they abut the landfill?
I wasn't seeing...
It's a policy choice. If you're comfortable with it, we can put some language together that would, that would provide that relief in the ordinance for those properties. It is certainly a very special circumstance, it's unique, the community's unique in the region, and, and perhaps it's worthy of having a provision of language.
Yeah.
I thought I said 500, I thought I'm reading 10.
10, yeah.
Yeah, all right, we'd like to see that.
It would have to be 10.
All right.
And the one last question I have with regards to these side yard setbacks, is some of us that have five acre pieces over there might be like, 1,100 foot deep is our property, but we're only like 210 feet wide or something like that, and we got a 50 foot setback from a building on one side, 50 foot setback from the other side, that's pretty much forces us to only be able to use 100 foot at the center of the property for any buildings. But I've seen ordinances in other communities where they might on one side have a 10 or a 15 foot setback, and on the other side, you know, 50 foot side yard setback. It gives us a little bit more flexibility or a little bit better way of engineering or deciding how to lay out a property for structures, and I don't know if any of that could possibly be relevant here. Not all of us have skinny but very, very deep properties, but that's where, where I'm at, and I think the people next to me are like that as well.
Why couldn't we put language in for that to cover that unique situation? If you consider it on site only?
You have to share your thoughts. I think, um, there's, there's potential, you get here to individual cases which are better handled on a site plan review than in the general language, and I just don't know where that tipping point is, and I defer to expert opinion.
Yeah, I think we can look at that because, you know, we stayed, as I said, with the existing standards. That situation is unique, I think we could address that in some fashion, at least for your discussion.
Yeah.
We could, we could look at that, see what, see what's possible.
I'm not trying to complicate matters, I'm just looking at logistics in the future of what my possibilities are with this piece of property.
There are, there are ordinances that...
I understand, so you want to ensure that we write it in a way where it allows us to be flexible if that's appropriate.
Right.
I understand. So I think there's a little, go look at that and, and come up with a proposal for somehow handle it.
Thank you. It would, it would be something where the zoning board of appeals could be a little more flexible.
Yes.
'Cause I've got 30 feet on two sides down at my place, 30 foot on one side of the building and 30 foot on the other, that the ZBA gave me, because I had to sit a problem frame. But the ZBA would have to be a little more flexible, too, under his circumstances.
Yeah, we, we'd like to have the regulation structured so that, that you wouldn't have to go to the ZBA.
That would be my goal.
All right. I'm thinking we're done here on the dimensional standards.
One last thing, on section 30.205, we talked with regards to complying with dimensional Number one says no structure shall be erected, converted, enlarged, except in conformity with the land area regulations. I would just suggest that we add at that point, unless permitted by Article 65, because I think Article 65 is a great addition, the ordinance that lessens the standards as far as it relates to getting a variance from the zoning board of appeals, but I think it should just be referenced there that it is a lesser standard for the enlargement issue. We could add that in there, or we reference Article 65.
Maybe we can take a look at that.
Because I'd like to, you know, the idea of a good, good ordinance is to stay away from zoning board of appeals, so they're just a very special, unique circumstances, hardships and things of that nature, a good ordinance, structure so that you don't have to really use this only board of appeals.
Well, under this section, if we want, someone wanted to enlarge their building, and they're already non-conforming as to a side yard setback or a front yard setback, they would not be permitted to enlarge it. But under Article 65, you are permitted to enlarge it if you meet their criteria, which is a lesser criteria than the statutory practical difficulty standard.
Well, from the, from the, and this is, this provision, 30.205, this is, this is about as close to boilerplate as you can get, I mean, in terms of it's in virtually a ordinance in a very similar fashion. This is basically, this section says the building must conform. What he, what, what the gentleman's referred to is buildings that don't conform already to, to some setback requirement, therefore they're a non-conforming structure as far as the ordinance is concerned. And they then are covered by this non-conforming article. I'm not sure that the cross-reference is necessary, but we can certainly take a look at it. But this is really talked about, the building must conform, and if for some reason it doesn't, it's covered in this other, other section.
It's inconsistent with what's later provided.
We'll certainly take a look at it.
And section, the third one there, every building here after erected on a lot or parcel of land, and the word created is there, 'cause I, I, just a point of clarification, are we talking about a land division that would have created it?
Yes.
Anything created. All right, if it's limited to that.
Can't read enough for a lot.
Well, that's true, that's why I'm wondering how it could come about, that says it had to comply with lot size, if it would, because of course, it wouldn't allow it to be subdivided.
That's, that's right.
It just stays.
Not a lot of record.
Now, you just limited it, so they're not, this does not imply you a lot of record.
That's, that's established.
So I think, if, if there are no other items, we can go back to Article 40 and...
Sorry?
If there are no other items in Article 30, we can go back to Article 40, I think we should.
I think we should. We've been trying to do that for a little bit here. But I, I think we've done a good job of getting through it.
I can truthfully say.
I appreciate the.
We appreciate.
The input from the audience. Okay. Let's see what we can get done in the next 20 minutes. You want to read?
I wonder if it may be worth, just to keep an eye on industrial, taking a look at what made the last section.
She's gone, she couldn't wait. She asked to be heard.
Yeah, the section you're going to do now is what Mrs. Hamilton wanted to talk about that concerned her. She's gone. So we might as well do a different section and wait till later when she's back again.
Which section?
We have, we have opportunities for public comment where we can get input. And then there's, then there's further opportunities. And this goes to township board for me, assuming we get it out of the planning commission.
My, my suggestion would be look at page 40 dash 43, which is other uses. It's the last section here, right after the industrial material.
Yeah, 40, 4,600, okay. So. Adult and sexually oriented businesses. And I guess the question here is, are there any issues in that section? I, I don't have any. I mean, we'll go, we'll take a quick look up and down the table here, I think everybody's okay. So.
Okay, but the next section, 48.602, composting center. This, this is essentially an industrial operation. This is not somebody's compost pile in their backyard or even a farmer's compost pile. This is, this is an industrial land use that we're seeing pop up here and there. Over in Macomb County, they had a big one that caused a lot of, a lot of difficulties. Because they were not following strict guidelines related to that. So essentially what we've done here is we've put into the ordinance this, this industrial land use. This is similar to what we saw earlier with that industrial, intensive industrial operations. The key element to this is actually on page 48 dash 46, which is an environmental impact statement. So it requires them to essentially show you that they are not going to cause problems for their neighbors. In terms of pollution, issues for the townships.
And where, where does a composting center show up in the usage table?
This is, this is, let me see.
That's my own question.
Yeah, it's on, it's on page nine of the language table and it's a conditional use.
I see it.
In the agricultural residential district.
Conditional use in agricultural residential. So it would always be in for a conditional use.
Exactly. And so this is basically requirement provides our information here.
Do we have any existing besides the landfill?
No.
Hello? I'm recycling mulch and composting and everything.
Come tell them, they didn't know you could have got away with it.
Well, I don't want any problems. I mean, I'm not full-blown composting, but I'm, I'm grinding wood and recycling mulch and, and I've got compost in my yard. Some of which I bought from the landfill and blended with other materials. I don't know what the issue is with that.
Okay.
I do have one, one more, one more section in 40 I thought about that doesn't track industrial. Section 40.411, the showroom, display and sale products.
You didn't choke back?
Yeah, I went by it. I believe currently that this is 25%, not 10%, is that correct?
On one floor, is that right?
On the floor space for display and sales.
We could, we could check to see what that percentage is.
Yeah, we've talked about this before.
Yes.
Like I'm sure it came up in an earlier meeting, right, where we talked about what would apply to what's called the direct sales portion of some of the businesses, general industrial.
Yeah, I believe it's 25 now and this is changing it to 10.
Okay, we'll make sure on that.
And I don't, I don't have a, there's a, what, a 10% limitation on the floor space?
It basically applies to, you have some sort of retail sale that's in conjunction with what you do. Say you, say you were a fence contractor. And of course, the place you'd likely have to put that sort of material is in an industrial district. You're not going to have it in a building. But yet, you might want to have people actually come in and buy some fence. So you may need some sort of retail portion of your building floor space to serve those people.
Yeah, I, I agree. No, I can think of a trailer store I go to, right, where they have retail stuff in the front of the trailer store and then they manufacture trailers in the back, that kind of thing. And it would seem as, as though a 10% restriction might be overly restrictive in some cases. And so I guess the question would be.
It's, it's trying to find a balance between.
How do we handle that? Is it, is it site plan specific or is there a, a way to change the guideline?
Well, the percentage is, is a good way to go, just say, because no matter what the number is, if it was, you know, 10 or 25%, you're saying it is a secondary activity. Principal activity is industrial, this is very much a secondary activity. So if the current ordinance is 25%, we could certainly carry that through.
I would be more comfortable with a higher limit.
Yes. Yes.
You good now? No, where were we, we were. Forty, we were heading down to extraction operations.
Or are we past the composting, extraction operations now?
Right, and the next one is 46.603, extraction operations. And this is basically carried through from the current ordinance. I think the main changes were a little bit of organization and tweaking a few terms that have, that need to be updated. But essentially what's, what's in the current ordinance.
Very lengthy section. I understand it's a direct transfer from existing ordinance, so I, I don't take any issue with that now.
I think the one, the one suggestion for the future is we may want to look at moving this out of the zoning ordinance.
Sorry?
Once, one thing for the future is we may want to look at moving this out of the zoning ordinance to go standalone ordinance. And the only reason for that is that there have been changes in state laws that, that impact zoning for extraction operations. But until, until we choose to do that, we should keep this here. And then at some point in the future, if the township board decides to adopt a standalone extraction ordinance, this, we would take this out at that point.
All right, and then we have 604, temporary concrete and asphalt batch plans.
This is, this is not your permanent operation. This is that, that operation that sets up basically to supply locally for a project. And the ordinance, we've added it into the ordinance basically to allow it to happen. If you have the county road commission needs to set up an operation for, for them or, or we have.
Ah, yes.
Another business that needs a, a significant amount. So this just sets the requirements for, for those.
And the key word is temporary, right?
Yeah, and I'm okay with that. Yeah, it's temporary, okay. And then we have 605, which is utility transmission distribution lines. With three simple requirements.
And this is a carryover from the existing.
Carryover, okay.
Now, we do have one additional section that we'll be adding to this, and that is related to a state law change. We, we have to provide for farm-based biofuel production facilities. This is farm-based ethanol production. It is a requirement that was added to the state zoning act and we will provide you with the language for that. You'll see it in the, in the updated version. And basically, the state law says, put it in the ordinance exactly as, as the law requires. We really don't have any deal about that one, so we're just, we're going to put it in the ordinance as they require it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll go into the 605 area?
It would actually, yeah, be section 606.
606. All right. I want to allow seven minutes to wrap this up, we'll be done at 10. So I guess I was, I would suggest we leave the front part of section 40 alone for the time being as it gets into the farm discussion and we know that that was important to member who of our audience who left. So maybe we can schedule things so that the next planning commission meeting, when we get into the ordinance, we will start there and work through the front half of section 40. Everyone's okay with that? All right. All this paper, I have to find the one we're working from here. Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to close the discussion on the zoning ordinance for now and recognize we have to pick it up. And we need to do an inventory of what's left to go through and I would, I would like someone to share that with me once you've had a shot at it. And we'll look at scheduling another hour on this subject, perhaps at our next regular meeting.
Yes, as I mentioned, we want to respond.
Or will we not have time for that?
Well, as I mentioned, these gentlemen and you as a planning commission, our intent is to have revisions so that you can see them based upon the discussion this evening. Whether it's on the agenda, that is up to you. But by that date, we'd like to have something that you hold in your hand, you can see where the revisions are taking place and discuss them and be sure that everybody is, is okay with this.
Okay, so with that, I have a proposal then, which is, in our next meeting, we'll have revisions to the ordinance and we'll have an inventory of what we've been through in detail and what's left to go. And then we will, at that time, schedule the next detailed session on going through what's, what remains to be done.
I think that'd be good, that would be a meeting just for consideration of the zoning ordinance draft.
Okay.
But they would be available after the meeting that I could pass them out to. So that you'd have a chance to get them before the conference.
That's why we're going to be short. Yeah, so that's where it's liable to be. So as a point of information, that means that a detailed review is liable to be the March 18th meeting?
March 18th meeting?
No. March 25th is our meeting night and you also have St. Mary's Coptic Church that is coming back and requesting preliminary and final site plan. So I'm not sure how much time.
Okay, you know, they're.
Oh, I'm sorry, February 25th.
I was, I was thinking that the church was on the 25th?
Yes, it's February.
Oh, February, okay. So that's why I'm thinking this will work in March.
March 4th, without the rezoning.
Yes, so then.
And then March 18th would be your next regular meeting and to date, I have nothing on that agenda.
Right, so that's, so as a point of information, the next deep dive into the zoning ordinance is likely to be March 18th. Right, where, and we're going to have the draft revisions at our meeting in two weeks.
On 25th.
Two weeks' time. Okay. All right. Reports of commissioners or committees? Do we have anything to report?
We have a scheduled and open space preservation meeting for February 26th, Tuesday.
Very good.
Seven o'clock.
Anything else? All right. Our next item is approval of minutes from the January 28th meeting. Everyone should have the draft. An entertaining motion.
If I may speak, under public comment, I thought on your copy you might have the word meet. I did catch that, it is need. Under Mr. Pergari, need to pull together as a community. Spell check doesn't work on this, where is it just from right that I was.
See where she's, really pushing, you know what she's.
It's on the first page under public comments. I had, I think your copy shows meet to pull together. It should be, the word should be need to pull together as a community.
Fifth bullet.
Yeah. It's one of the bullet points, under number four. The fifth one down.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, that's, I apologize for that error.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 20th meeting with that correction. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? And I oppose? Fine. Any reports and announcements? There's none from the chair. Fine, our last item is public comment, item 12. Ms. Cook?
Yes, when Mrs. Hamilton got up and asked to be heard, she's already listened to everybody who was not in public comment but were talking about parts of the, of the thing you're fixing, the ordinances. But you were wa, you had an agenda, the agenda, you were straight off the agenda and she thought she was going to miss the part that she came to see because you guys just went off into another, another part of the ordinance. That's why she wanted to be heard. But you had listened to the entire industrial end of group, but you didn't, wouldn't listen to her. So I thank you for, she doesn't, wasn't very happy when she left, thank you.
Any other comment? Ms. Ward?
I can truthfully say that you folks are, and Mr. Pennington, I would be congratulated. I, I am very happy this new board, old people or whatever, you are, in my estimation, upright people. You are collectible. That is a commend, a commendation you folks did. And that's what it takes to be a, a good planning commission. And I have never been, I've been here since 1960 and I, this is good. I think this township can go forward with you folks.
Okay. That's in the public comment. I declare the meeting adjourned at 9:59. Thank you.